And good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2018, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and as we do when starting all meetings, I'd like to ask we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to read the mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging our curriculum, high-quality instruction, and instructional and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." Next on the agenda is public comment. This time, I invite any member of the public to join us and address the school committee on any matter of interest across the school or town. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Student Advisory Council. Do we have a Student Advisory Council representative this evening? No, I didn't think so, but didn't want to skip over. Next, we're very excited to recognize some really talented children from the Wakefield Public Schools. The annual MWRA Poster and Writing Contest winners. We have some students with us who not only have entered the contest and done incredibly well, but they're here tonight to share some of their thoughts. I asked Dr. Smith to take it from here.
Absolutely. So I'd like to invite Jack Ellis, grade two, from the Greenwood School, to come up, along with Dylan McCarthy, grade five, from the Galvin Middle School, to come up. And we're really, really proud of them. So lots and lots of students all over Massachusetts entered this contest, and we have two winners right here in Wakefield, which is really exciting. So maybe we can start with Jack. So Jack won first place for the poster he made. And Jack, I learned some interesting information. I heard that you made your poster on the Learn Anywhere Day. Is that true? Yeah? Would you mind telling us just what your poster would look like and what that was like to do it on a snow day?
Well, it was scrapbooked, and, well, there was little writing, and it took about five snow days, and I finished on the day we handed it in.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Great job. So you really put a lot of effort into that poster. It's a good thing we had five snow days.[226.04][226.04](Laughter) What if we only had two snow days?
Well, we had quite a few.
We did. Yes, we did. Well, I'm glad you made good use of that time and was very, very proud of you, and thank you to your parents as well. And then Dylan was one of the winners of the writing contest, which I was really excited about because we spent a lot of time teaching our students writing, both in elementary school and at middle school. So can you tell us a little bit about your essay?
Um, so it was... So I got all my information from a document of the Water District, and I just wrote down a couple of facts and tried to make it all rhyme.
Nice, very good. And do you think that writing in school, like, how has that helped you? You know, you became a contest winner from a lot of students, so you must be a pretty good writer. Has the teaching and learning in school helped you out?
Yeah, like, I try to use, like, so we're talking about a bunch of, like, imagery and personification and all that, and idioms. So I was trying to use a lot of imagery and, um...
Dylan, you just knocked it out of the park with that.[302.12][302.12](Laughter) That was like I planted that seed right there. That's fantastic. I bet your essay was very sophisticated, you know, one of the best ones. Good job.
Thanks.
So I don't know if anyone had any questions for the students or...
Comments or anything?
I don't want to put them on the spot.
Congratulations.
They'll just say, "Great job."
That's wonderful.
Congratulations.[328.12][328.12](Applause) Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. Is the public able to view the posters and the writing, like, on the MWRA website, do you know, or...
Mom is saying yes.
Yes. Yes, if you search for MWRA Poster Contest 2018, you can find all the winners.
Beautiful. We will do that. Well, thank you very much, and we hope you'll come back soon, okay? All right, good night.
Thank you.[357.92][357.92](Applause)
They're also on display at the Waterworks Museum in Mount Boston.
Oh. Wow. Okay, great, fantastic. Thank you boys so much.
So next on the agenda, with the committee's indulgence, I would like to take out of order the recognition of our soon-to-be newly-retired staff members. I know there was a reception honoring them earlier this evening, and we are thrilled, of course, to have them in a formal part of the meeting, to recognize them once again for their outstanding contributions over the years. So with the committee's indulgence, if we can take that out of order and welcome our soon-to-be retired staff, and back to Dr. Smith for some words of acknowledgement.
Well, first, I'd like to acknowledge two retirees who were not able to attend this evening. Wakefield High School Guidance Secretary Joyce Passerini and Woodville Paraprofessional Maria Plunkett. What these two wonderful human beings have in common is the great love they have shared with their students over many years. So on behalf of the Wakefield Public Schools and the children who have benefited from this love, we extend our gratitude and wish them a well-deserved retirement and nothing but happiness ahead. So this evening, I'd like to introduce each retiree, if they don't mind standing up just for a few little comments about each of you, and then at the end, we'll join together and we'll take a quick little group photo, okay? So let's start with Christine Sacco, if she doesn't mind standing. So I have known Chris for many years, not just as a secretary, but as the mom of her two children I had in band years ago. And as I said at her retirement party, they were two of the happiest kids I ever had in my career, and who wouldn't be with a mom like Chris? Chris became a secretary in the Wakefield Public Schools in 1992 and has been the virtual heartbeat of the Dahlberg School for as long as I can remember, effortlessly managing the main office while sharing her warm smile with every child, parent, or staff member who arrives at her door. Her incredible dedication has kept the Dahlberg running smoothly, and we are grateful. I love the title of the book that will be dedicated to the Dahlberg School Library in her honor, "The School Secretary from the Black Lagoon."[511.24][511.24](Laughter) I thought that was really kind of cool. Congratulations to Chris Sacco on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children of Wakefield.[520.33][520.33](Applause) Kathy Palumbo. Kathy was born and raised in Wakefield, graduating from Wakefield Memorial High School in 1979. She started her career in education as a paraprofessional at Greenwood and Doyle, then taught first grade for 19 years at Greenwood, Ewell, and Galvin. Kathy spent the last 15 years as a special education teacher at Woodville, and then, as Kathy would say, "The end."[552.72][552.72](Laughter) But, of course, it's not. She has many, many adventures ahead. I would say that Kathy is the rock and roll of the Woodville soul, and they are really, really going to miss her. In the way that Kathy made the way for children these many years, in her honor, the book "Make Way for Ducklings" will be dedicated to the Woodville School Library. Congratulations to Catherine Palumbo on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children of Wakefield.[582.44][582.44](Applause) And Joanne Tedeschi. So Joanne has been a special education teacher for 36 years in the Wakefield Public Schools until her retirement in December. She worked in many of our elementary schools, including Greenwood, Dahlberg, The Little Red Schoolhouse, Walton, and finally, Woodville, where she finished her career. Joanne was a caring, dedicated professional who was supremely dedicated to her school. She provided services to children with disabilities in a way that made them feel safe, confident, and proud. It is not surprising, then, that the title of the book she leaves in her honor is "We're All Wonders," dedicated to the Woodville School Library. Congratulations to Catherine Palumbo on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children... Oops, sorry.[639.72][639.72](Laughter) Joanne Tedeschi. You can tell I was using a template.[643.24][643.24](Laughter) Congratulations to Joanne Tedeschi on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children of Wakefield. Thank you, Joanne.[652.37][652.37](Applause) And next is Joanne Kenny. Joanne graduated from Salem State College in 1985 and began teaching second grade in the Chelsea Public Schools. She taught there for 14 years. She received her master's degree from Simmons College in 1997 and came to Wakefield in 1999 to assume a position as a school librarian. I didn't know that, actually, which is very neat, at the Dahlberg. When the librarian position was eliminated in 2008, Joanne went back to her roots, teaching second grade at the Dahlberg School, and she is finishing her 19th year at that school... Well, in Wakefield, at that school. For 33 years, she has given her love and dedication to her students and colleagues. It's incredible to think about how many children she has taught to love reading at the very beginning of their school years. In her honor, the book "Hello, Lighthouse" will be dedicated to the Dahlberg School Library. She has truly been that beacon of light for children. Congratulations to Joanne Kenny on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children of Wakefield.[730.87][730.87](Applause) And then Tom Fratto. Tom grew up in Wakefield and describes how his career was built from his own experiences with student exploration. He loved woodchop at the then-Wakefield Junior High School and stayed after school every day possible to build, experiment, and learn. He went on to the Vokes for autotech and then earned an industrial arts degree from Pittsburgh State. Tom launched a career teaching general industrial arts courses such as woodworking, drafting, graphic arts, and computer-aided design to middle and high school students all over Massachusetts. As schools began to shift curriculum to its technology and engineering, Tom was led back to Wakefield and taught tech engineering at the Galvin Middle School for the last 10 years. We will always be grateful for how he paved the way at Galvin for an amazing program in that subject area. Appropriately, the book "The Way Things Work Now" will be dedicated, in his honor, to the Galvin Middle School Library. Congratulations to Tom Fratto on his retirement with gratitude for his service to the children of Wakefield.[805.56][805.56](Applause) And finally, Deb Calora. So Deb is a graduate of Salem State and Leslie Universities. She taught third and fourth grade in North Andover for nearly a decade before becoming a curriculum coordinator there. After serving Newbury Elementary as an assistant principal to Wakefield's great fortune, Deb came to Wakefield to become the principal of the Greenwood and Walton Schools. She has been an extraordinary leader for the last 13 years. I was honored to present Deb with the WEF Excellence in Education Award in 2016, recognition for the exemplary leadership she has provided to her school and our school district. Above all things, she cultivates the love of learning and growth mindset for all children. The book "If I Built a House" will be dedicated, in her honor, to the Greenwood School Library. This is a fitting tribute, as she certainly built a home for learning at the Greenwood School. Congratulations to Deb Calora on her retirement with gratitude for her service to the children of Wakefield.[877.56][877.56](Applause) So at this time, I would like to invite all of our retirees up to the front for a photo. Would you do us the honors, Mr. Piffling?
I want to do two rolls on the shore people on the front.[930.72][930.72](Laughter)
Joanne, the sneaker head in the middle there, there we go.
Which Joanne?[944.72][944.72](Laughter)
Thank you.
And I told them they could go home, because I need them in school tomorrow.
Now back to our program, already in process, as they used to say on TV, right? Okay, well, this is a wonderful way to start the meeting. It certainly was, so thank you to Dr. Smith for being so, as typical, prepared for this wonderful recognition for students and staff. Item number seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion.
The school committee approved the minutes of the meeting of May 22, 2018, and accept the minutes of the School Committee Policy and Planning Subcommittee meeting of May 17, 2018, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number eight, our budget items. Why don't we start with the motion, if we could, and then hand it over to Dr. Smith and Mr. Piffling?
The school committee approved the 2018-2019 tuition and fees proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? If we can start with Dr. Smith or Mr. Piffling?
Well, you should go ahead and take it.
All right, thank you very much. In your package, you have a list of 36 items that we annually, or you annually vote on to approve or amend. They include all the athletics, marching band, percussion, winter guard, ice hockey assessments, transportation, middle school and high school fees, as well as performing arts, Wakefield Academy, and school lunch, and Doyle preschool tuition. I'll just give you the highlights. The athletics, marching band, winter percussion, and color guard are all being reduced, or proposed to be reduced, from $215 down to $175 per sport or per activity, with a family cap per year of going from $645 down to $525. The other highlights are transportation increasing $10 for both a one-way or a round-trip fare, and that's staying consistent with our increases from our transportation provider. The middle school programs, there's a drama program that's being reduced by $5, and a science olympiad program which is being reduced by $10. And then at the high school, all of the activities are going from $40 to $35. And the performing arts is a group of different programs, be it drama, jazz band, and acapella, that you pay one fee for the year, and it covers all of those, and that's going from $120 down to $100. And then finally, our Doyle preschool tuition is being increased by 2%, rounded up to the nearest $5. So the recommendation is to go from $6,400 for a full-day, five-day program to $6,530, and a half-day, five-day program from $3,200 to $3,265. That represents a 2% increase on both of those, which stays consistent with our... Actually, it's a little under our teacher contracts for next year, or our educator and power contracts for next year. So it doesn't pass along the full cost, but the majority of the cost in the contract. Page two and three is just our rentals. Right now, we have not recommended any changes to our rental programs, be it our auditoriums, our gymnasiums, or any other areas, spaces that we rent out on a regular basis. I believe that we'll be doing further analysis. Recently, on our listserv for business managers, there was a survey done asking for what our rental rates were. That came out today, so I'm going to ask for the results after and see where we line up. So we may come back later for an adjustment on our rental fees, but for right now, I think we're staying consistent with what we believe other districts are doing.
So maybe just a couple of very quick notes from me. One is, I'm just so pleased at, you know, in the FY '19 budget, we were able to partner with the town in reducing activity fees for the second consecutive year, and they're really down substantially from where they were just a couple of years ago. So, you know, so I think that's just such a great win for the families of Wakefield, so I'm really pleased about that. The Finance and Facilities Subcommittee met to have this discussion this year and last year in regard to Doyle tuition and bus fees. And what we talked about was, you know, in the recent past, sometimes there weren't any increases for a period of years, and then suddenly, we found ourselves really behind the game and having to kind of make a more significant increase, you know, kind of leaping the cost forward in one year. So we felt like it would be really prudent to try to make a commitment to make small incremental increases, roughly 2%, you know, for the Doyle, and, you know, say $10 for the bus fees, in order for us to kind of keep on pace with cost of living increase. So we feel like that's prudent to stay up with that, so we're not going to be surprising families with a large increase four or five years from now. So we thought that that would be prudent, as I said. So I think that's just to kind of understand where some of these numbers came from. That's it.
Any discussion or questions for the superintendent of Business Administration? Mr. Callanan?
No questions. I just have a comment that they, you know, to thank you to the town of Wakefield for making this opportunity available to our students to bring these fees down, and it's another step closer to eliminating what has been a goal for most members of this committee for a long time.
Yeah, I would just echo what Mr. Callanan said in thanking the town administration, that this, being the second year of a two-year, our reduction plan, it's really pleasing to see that these type of things are going in the right direction while we continue to provide pretty vibrant and robust programs. Our capacity to do more with less in this regard, and the ability to, the administration to find ways to make sure that students are in no way being deprived of any extracurricular activity or sport. So it's a pretty exciting time. And not stealing any thunder from the food service, we see that there were no recommended increases in school lunch?
Not at this time. Kristen has to keep a close eye on regulations to make sure that we stay within our boundaries, or typically, we have to increase to stay within our numbers. So she hasn't recommended anything yet, but the night's still early.[1421.44][1421.44](Laughter)
The night's still early. Well, we're going to be voting on school lunch as part of this fee structure, so that's why I wanted to bring that up. Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. With thanks to the administration and the Finance Committee for their work on this.
It's always easier when you're going down to get a vote than when you're going up.
Certainly is. Don't I know it.
The next item in your packet is our monthly reports. You'll see some changes. Certainly, in the salary lines, we did make some adjustments to some charge-offs that we do every year. So we did those a little earlier this year, so we could really get a good handle on where we are at the end of the year, but those are typically some additional charges off, charging off to some grants, as well as our Wakefield Academy fees that we charge back off to some salaries. So salary lines have come certainly into check with a slight surplus there. We are doing our big payroll. Debbie's already processed it, or in the middle of processing it, so we should have better reports for the second meeting of the month to kind of know where we are, if there's any strange things there. Other than that, you'll notice on line 13, sped tuitions, the special education tuitions, the stabilization transfer has hit in the transfer line of $175,000. So again, thank you to the town for that in addition, so that brought us a little closer to where we needed to be. Other than that, utilities, again, saved our tail a little bit this year. We did have a slightly warmer winter than projected, and we did burn oil where we could. That was a, oil was a lower cost than natural gas this year. So in the three schools we could burn oil, we took full advantage of that opportunity. At the bottom line, you'll see that we're $190,000 still in the negative. Not to panic. We have our post-academy money that has come in, and it's not reflected in these reports, so that will be transferred in at the end of the year of about $100,000. And then on page five, when you get there, when we get to revolving accounts, you'll notice that our circuit breaker will come in with the final payment of about $120,000 in surplus there also. That'll offset the tuition. So basically, we just charged off too much to tuitions and not enough to circuit breaker. We'll make those adjustments this month, and that should bring us right around the number of zero that we try to get to at the end of the year. So we feel confident we'll get there. Payroll is the big one, and that'll hit before the next meeting in two weeks, so we'll have a much better grasp on that for everybody. Not projecting any payroll issues.
Very nice.
Just a question about payroll. All right. Do some people get a chunk before the summer? Is that...
So any school year employees are paid out five summer checks for teachers. They get five summer checks in June. Some districts will do it where they pay them throughout the summer, they encumber the money through the summer, and then pay them out. The teacher's contract for us, or educator's contract for us, says that we pay out their five pays at the end of the school year.
Okay.
In addition, our paraprofessionals get two pays at the end of the school year. One is their regular pay, and then one additional bonus pay for the summer. And then all other employees are, for the most part, there's a few other separate situations, like some of our coordinators get paid that don't work in the summer, they get the five checks also, but most all of our other employees, clerical, custodial, central office staff, they get paid throughout the summer, so there's no... July 1 starts a new year for them.
Okay.
Our teacher's contract actually goes to August 31st, but it says that we pay out at the end of the school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the monthly report? Or the local budget report? I have nothing to report, nothing new to report on grants. Everything's within our planned spending, so there's no deficits in grants due to the adjustments we made earlier in the year from the Title I grants and IDEA grants. To move on to the revolving accounts, school lunch is coming into line, and preschool tuition will come into line. It's about $3,700 off right now, but we do expect a surplus there. We just collected some last of the June tuitions, so that will certainly get us above the negative on that before the end of the year. And then circuit breaker, the bottom line, we are expecting a fourth-quarter payment of $327,000, so that 205 will go to a positive about $120, $122. That's where we're going to make up some of that deficit. In addition, we are still waiting for final confirmation on how much additional will we get by the governor signing the bill to bring circuit breaker from 65 to 72. I project that could take in about $140,000 surplus for us, but we're in discussions right now on how that money will be handled when it comes in. So I don't know if Dr. Smith wants to talk about that right now, but we're still looking at our options for that. Okay. So any questions on the reports? Very good. Love to when we get to June and we don't have a lot of questions on the reports. I do have two, three payroll warrants, warrants 44, 46, and 48 that I would ask for an approval for.
We have a motion.
The school committee approved payroll warrants 44, 46, and 48 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And we have one gift this evening. The gift is from the Friends of Wakefield Memorial High School softball to pay a stipend to the assistant varsity coach for the 2017-18 spring season in the amount of $2,500.
And the school committee accepts with gratitude the donation of $2,500 from the Friends of Wakefield. the Friends of the Wakefield Memorial High School softball to pay a stipend for the assistant varsity softball coach during the 2017-2018 spring season?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I was just going to eat on the door.
You know what happens when that happens.
Okay. That concludes my reports. Concludes business reports. Very, very good. Okay. Item number nine, chairman's comments. We already recognize the retirees, but certainly, again, it's always a great part of the wind down of the year to celebrate such wonderful service to the children and families of Wakefield. So we certainly wish all of the retiring members of our community nothing but the Item number B, or I guess, item B. On the, that's the math in me, I guess. You see about halfway into your packet, a proposed meeting schedule for 2018-2019. We don't typically make a motion on that unless there are members that have concerns about it, which we could certainly address offline, but this is the proposed schedule that we'd like to introduce for our planning purposes. We'll have one meeting in July, sort of splitting the month there, July 24, then back to the routine schedule for August 14 and 28. You may pick up a shift again in schedule in September in recognition and of the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. We will move September 11, which is the Tuesday, to Wednesday, so it'll be a Wednesday meeting in recognition of the religious holiday, so Wednesday, September 12, and then back to the Tuesday schedule for the 25th. The rest of the year is really the same as we could expect, and again, inclusive of coming to April with the Wednesday, April 24, because the town election would be the prior day, Tuesday, the 23rd. Okay? So as you're checking your family calendars, if you have any concerns about that, we could certainly bring those up. It's not actually an actionable item, but we were developing the calendar earlier last week and figured we would share it as soon as it's available. Okay? Next on the agenda, as we discussed at the last meeting, that there are a couple of administrative positions that the school committee does provide an agreement to with the superintendent for both their initial employment and contract renewals. Two of those employees are up for contract renewal and reemployment. Superintendent is, both the superintendent and the incoming superintendent, and I have had specific conversations with Mr. Lyons in this regard, but both the, Mr. Piffling and School Business Administrator and Ms. Lynn O'Neil, the Director of Special Education, are being recommended for reemployment, so it's before us this evening to approve the recommendations as being made. We will have two motions in that regard. Mr. Callanan?
Will the school committee approve the contract for the business administrator as presented?
Is there a second? Discussion? Dr. Smith?
Maybe just a couple of quick notes. As you can see in your packet, my school business administrator, Michael Piffling, completes six years of service, developing a transparent, highly efficient budget process and providing exemplary management skills to central office. We are so fortunate to have such a skilled and experienced classy, awesome business administrator. It meant a lot to me, along with Doug Lyons, to really, you know, shore him up on that team. There's nothing more important to a superintendent than having a strong business administrator. So we, I highly recommend, you know, Mr. Piffling. We, I'm recommending that we stagger for these three positions for Mr. Lyons, who has signed a five-year contract, for the business manager and the administrative of special education and student services, to stagger those contracts so that we're both, you know, minimizing the possibility of multiple executive team changes in one year, but also kind of holding together a strong leadership team. So I've included a proposed salary. You can see that I provided the comps for the DART, Surrounding, and SEEM districts, and just so you can kind of see where the salary lands.
This is all in a memo that's been in the packet and what Dr. Smith is referring to. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Piffling.
I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
We have another motion.
Will the school committee approve the contract of the Director of Special Education as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Smith?
Okay. And so similarly, I'm so pleased to present a proposed three-year term contract for our administrative of special education and student services, Lynn O'Neil. She completes five years of service, so she has tremendous experience. She has really transformed the inclusionary practices in the Wakefield public schools over that time period, building professional development to activate universal design for learning systems in the Wakefield public schools. So pleased to have her again, another really critical, critical position, leading the work in the district. So I also included similarly the DART, Surrounding, and SEEM salaries, so that you can kind of see where we landed with it. But again, I highly recommend this contract for Ms. O'Neil.
Any discussion? Ms. Deliacos?
For Dr. Smith, so you mentioned in your introductory remarks with Mike's contract that you staggered the service, so we have Doug as five, Mike as four, and Len is three. And so could you just elaborate a little bit on that, on your thinking around that?
So just really just meaning that, you know, by staggering them, it will just minimize the possibility that two executive administrators would leave at the same time.
I see.
And I think that, just for kind of the strength of the district, it would be very difficult for the district should the superintendent and the special education director leave at the same time, or the business administrator and the special director, or any combination, the two of the three. So they were all amenable to staggered length of term.
Got it, got it. So, but just for the record, there's no guarantee that that, that that can't happen. It just means that...
Right. Exactly. And that's why I'm using the words kind of minimizes that possibility.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
If I may just add, this is another, this type of conversation we will also have when Mr. Lyons, if, and Dr. Smith, if Dr. Smith is still with us, when we get to the assistant superintendent, that'll be the, that'll sort of shore up the central office team, and this will be part of that conversation as well, because that's also a position that will come before the school committee. But certainly having both when Dr. Smith became superintendent, we had a vacancy in the assistant superintendency, and now, of course, again, so where we wouldn't want, again, to minimize, we want to have such an impact of other administrators all sort of at the same, at the same time. Other than, Ms. Purcell?
I also have a question. Thank you. As being a member of the school committee, I've been contacted by several parents in Wakefield who are concerned with special education, and based on my experiences with special ed and theirs, and in addition to the fiscal year 2018 budget being increased by $690,000 for 11 out-of-district placements, I'm just not comfortable actually supporting this three-year contract, and I'll be voting no.
Any other comments or questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes, six to one. Item 9D. I got myself out of it. I was about to, I was this close to saying number D. Item number 9D, discussion about subcommittee reorganization. I had sort of planted this seed about two meetings ago. We didn't have the discussion at the Boston meeting, I think appropriately so. We should have more of these type of conversations here in town. What I would like to do is to sort of set an opportunity with everyone, either electronically or over a cup of coffee, invite every member of the committee to share some thoughts, if you have any, about what the subcommittee of reorganization, I think, not just in who would like to be on what subcommittee. I think this is a genuine opportunity. We've had the existing subcommittee structure, I think, works well in place for a handful of years now, but this is, I think, an opportunity to see and perhaps evaluate what might be some needs or what might be some missing parts, or what might be some, maybe there's an area that there's a work overload, or that, or maybe with some thinking that maybe we just need to create something that could be an interim committee without necessarily making some permanency to it. But my thinking, as I shared, I believe, two meetings ago, was that this is an opportunity to do some thinking around what types of structural needs we, the school committee, would like to be thinking about. I think it's a great opportunity with the new superintendent coming in as also, to be able to best support Mr. Lyons, as well as in many ways to guide the work of his in the first year. So I don't necessarily have, I have some thoughts as well. I don't necessarily have a plan at this time, but I would like to invite anyone to reach out and have some conversations around that, and have some public conversation at the next meeting, and to be able to set something in place so we can begin in earnest in August. So my goal would be at the first meeting in August to be able to announce what we have come to some consensus on as a subcommittee structure. So, okay, so that'll be on the next June meeting and the July meeting, and then we'll have announcement at the August, what'd we decide that was, August 4th or something? No, it's later than that. August 14th. I knew there was a four in there. So, okay? Does that seem reasonable, folks? All right, very good. Thank you. Moving on, item 10, the superintendent's reports and recommendations. Dr. Smith?
This time, I would love to invite Kristen Morello and Lisa Brown to come on up and provide us with a presentation, a food services update.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I think you all got a copy of basically a PowerPoint to give you a brief update. Dr. Smith had us keep it brief, so we tried to provide just a few things, but I'd like to say I'm really glad Lisa's here with me tonight. We've been running the district together, the district, the department together for the past five years, so we've seen some nice successes, and it's nice to have her here. Thank you for coming. Thank you. So we'll go through it kind of fast. I'm not a big fan of reading slides, so we did want to show you, this isn't a representation of everybody. We have some camera shy people in our department, but, you know, this is actually Lisa's idea. We just kind of wanted to throw up some pictures of people just in their kitchens and in their actual settings, because these are the people who are feeding your kids. So they care about the kids, they care about their work, as do we, and just kind of fun to, I love the Greenwood Cafe one because the PTO donated that sign a few years ago, and it's just a nice shot. And the Walton School is actually at the high school, their little satellite location prepping while we're under construction, so just nice to see that we have a nice, happy group of people there. So we thought we'd share. Professional development has been a huge piece of our department, and it's only growing. Lisa and I have been working with the staff, as they're all SNA members, they have school district-owned memberships, meaning if somebody chooses to leave the district, we own the membership, so we can transfer it to another person. It's a good class savings, and it houses the magazines and the newsletters and any paraphernalia that comes in, it's held in the school, so we can give it to the next person. But it came into great focus this year with the beginning of Learn Anywhere, because one of the things that SNA did nationally, School Nutrition Association did nationally, was they put all their webinars on the website saved, so you could go back. And if there was a webinar that you wanted to learn about gluten-free or about allergies or something, you could go back into, you didn't have to be there on what they call Webinar Wednesdays when they're live, but you could go back and either watch the video or do the training and take the quizzes and whatnot. So this is not an actual representation of everything everyone did, because we were teaching people how to use computers and do online training and document it, but there was more than 70 individual classes taken by our staff on their own, 120 hours, and more. So we're really proud of them. Some people had never had a computer, had to start using computers at work, and I think next year, it'll be even better. We, learning, a lot of people are coming back with a lot of different opportunities, so we're trying to make the most of the snow days as well. And all of our staff have kept up their certifications, and we had a few people, Sandy Texera from the Galvin School, she's the manager at the Galvin, attended with myself and another person, training with outside menu planner and vendor to try to get us onto a web-based future menuing. So it would be an opportunity, it'll take us a couple of years, but it'd be an opportunity to use what we have now and get us online, so parents can see the menus online and look at nutrition and some other things. We're a little, the back-of-the-house piece is challenging, but we're working with some people right now to get some of that going. Do you have anything to add on that?
No.
Okay. We also, just, this is just some of our staff at the Galvin. We had the School Nutrition Hero Day, and we, Lisa and I, got them T-shirts to wear that day, and they were having a little bit of fun showing you what kind of heroes they are. That's one of our staff being held up to fly for you in the Galvin. But just more of the trainings that everybody's taking advantage of, there's a good myriad of what's happening. These are just some pictures of actual food from our program, different things that Lisa and I've worked with the managers and leads and staff on, everything from developing new vendors to coming up with ways to use old products. So we have one case that maybe makes five different things. So a lot of fun this year, some promotional days. We also worked with outside brokers. They'll come in and we're already buying their products, so they'll help us do marketing and point of sale and try to make it more like a retail operation to entice the students to come in and see what's happening, and it helps us. That stuff, that's Lisa's forte. Lisa's great at marketing and putting up the signs and stuff. It's not so much mine. So when we can get it for free and get them to come in for free and help us out with a product we're already selling, we've been doing that. And we're investigating some other options for other revenue sources. We're going to use other people's time and money to make sure they work first, and then we're gonna, then we're gonna dive in. We're looking at some automated vending in the future that will connect to the NutriKids program and the POS for after-school and some other things, but that's another future option. Anything you want to? All right. These are pictures of the Galvin, and we just wanted you to see the food. It's good-looking food, and it looks great, and this is the way it looks every day. It's appealing, it's eye-catching. You can see on the right, it's the top of the little static cling things are little signs to tell them what's at the deli. The bottom is the actual deli setup. The left side is what they have at their hot grill items, all wrapped and ready to go, and the top one in the middle is all their pre-made sandwiches and salads. But we had asked them to share with us some pictures of food and whatnot to show you what they do, because you don't get to go in there every day. And that's only one, one school, but they do an amazing job. And this year, we tried to focus a little bit more on getting out in the community and letting people know who we are. I'm hoping to start doing a little bit more with social media so that we can let parents and community members know what's going on with pictures and with things that we're doing. But you can see a picture that many of you saw us at Parent University. Lisa and I attended and gave out some information, and Mrs. Texera from Galvin was also there. We did some food and tried to get some parent feedback on new items. Lisa has taken on the hockey banquet for outside catering, and we make some money to help support what we want to do for lunch and breakfast. She's also been doing the catering for the Celebration of Learning, working with Sue Warden, and today, this year, she took on the senior class breakfast, and then tons of field days and field trip lunches. And Lisa's been taking on a lot of that. She does all the catering, works with all the managers, leads, and PTOs, and it's like a second job, so they, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Because, well, not only is it something, like, everything we do isn't to make money, it's to help... it's, it's to help the kids or to, to show people what we can do and to, like the senior class breakfast, we just, we just wanted it to be fun for the kids, and it was, and it was, Will was, he was nervous and he wanted it to go well. But some of it is a revenue source, like the hockey banquet. We save them a lot of money, and we give them a great product, and it helps us, because every dollar that we get to put into the revolving fund helps us give that one more expensive fruit or vegetable or fix that piece of equipment, so. Do you want to add anything about that?
No.
Lisa even, Lisa even got them really nice catering aprons and everything to differentiate them from the regular day, so I think that's going really well. And I know a lot of you guys are very concerned about accountability and financial health, so we have had increases in lunch and breakfast at both the high school and the middle school, which is huge. High school's always a challenge, because we only have two lunch waves, there's a lot of kids in each lunch wave, it's an older building, so there are challenges there, and the fact that they brought up their breakfast and lunch is a testament to how much they've done with developing menu ideas. Nancy DeTulio is the manager at that school, and she's been working with us all year on trying to create new recipe items and market them different and display them differently, and she's done a great job with her staff. Galvin is no different. They had similar increases, and they have an amazing participation. And the elementary schools, some of them have seen some reductions in lunch counts, but a lot of that has been due to the construction, or we had to change the Doyle meals to be cold because of the facility and some things like that. But they're serving great amounts of the students, and those students that they are serving have been very positive. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback for what we've been able to do with the couple smaller schools. And Woodville, I'm so excited, Woodville's participation on pizza days is 70%. They're up to, they're serving 70% of those kids, and that's, that's a very big school.
Over 300.
Yeah. So they're doing, they're doing an amazing job there. At the end of the year, we're expecting the revolving fund to remain positive as it has the past five years. We did, we did have some costs associated with the Learn Anywhere and the Walton Project and whatnot, but I think her catering probably is going to maybe break us even. Let's hope. We'll, we'll have better numbers at the end of June, which we'll share with Michael. We're doing a lot with purchasing. We started, we, we actually helped start, we're in the steering committee for a new purchasing collaborative that's located a little bit more north of the state, and we're working with 45 other communities. There's a, I'm not even sure if you're aware, but there's a lot of regulations now about purchasing and what you're required to do, and the documentation and requirements through the Department of Ed have grown, and now they have their own separate audit for that. So we've been doing a lot of learning and a lot of adjusting, so we have some new opportunities with regard to that. I'm not sure that they're all going to experience savings, but we will be in compliance. So we will menu accordingly. This year, we did some equipment investments, and our big success is that we had a three year coordinated review from the Department of Ed, and we did really well. We did much better than the last time. The staff did amazing. They had, everything that was important to do, they had it done.
And it take a lot of pride in it.
They did. They took a lot of pride, and we got a lot of compliments, so.
Right.
So I kind of flew through that, but, anybody have any questions, or? I felt like I was racing.
Mr. Gonen.
I don't know, like, where you and Mike are disconnecting, but the, like, the report we have shows, I got 17, 22, 30, $39,000 swing from last year, but May 31 dates. Is there, is that just an accounting issue, or?
I think it's just an account, the way that you look at it, like, the revolving fund is like a checkbook with a stamp in time. So for instance, like, the last report I was looking at, there, there's still half of the month's outstanding May sales haven't been recorded by Town Hall, the reimbursements for May haven't been sent by, by DESI yet, the catering that Lisa has incurred, the expense for the labor and the food, they haven't been paid yet. So there's a lot of outstages owed by the students. So all that money, when you start adding it back in, if you, it, it would end up that you would be in a positive.
The other thing is, this last year, we may have had additional money sitting in student accounts. That actually shows up in the revolving account. So if parents let their accounts dwindle near the end of the year, one year, and they, or if they leave money in the account at the end of one year and they don't leave so much in the end of next year, that can add up. The state's been very slow in reimbursing, federal, the federal government, I should say, not the state, reimbursing the, the, the.
So do you think that last year, you'd received your reimbursement on May 31, and this year you didn't?
I.
I have no idea. I don't, I don't look at.
I'm comparing May 31 numbers from last year and this year.
So I know that, earlier this, when did I send you that email? So on the deposit for the state, that was within, it was within the last 14 days.
Oh, yeah.
So the deposit for May hadn't hit when I ran these reports, and that did hit, and that's a $26,000 deposit, was it?
$37,000.
Deposit?
For May, May it would be $37,000.
Okay. So right there is probably plenty, part of it. But I can't say that last year at this time that that deposit added either, that deposit added by the point either.
Yeah, that's, that's the unknown.
Right, right, exactly. So Kristen and I have already discussed that we're going to meet over the summer, because certain things hit her account that she doesn't always know about. Like if a freezer goes down and a bill comes in, we just pay it, and we don't always tell her that we paid it, so her numbers don't always jive with mine. So we said we're going to sit down and get a better process in place to do those things, to make sure that we're on the same page. But there are several things that can affect why a revolving account is, shows a difference between one year and the next, especially in school lunch, because there's so many factors to it. With the federal reimbursements, the amount of money sitting in students' accounts at the end of the year or at the end of, at the end of a month, some parents maybe will recharge at the beginning of the month, and maybe I missed that cutoff or something. So there are a number of things that can happen. Kristen feels very confident that she's going to be at least equal with last year, and she keeps separate spreadsheets on number of sale, unit sales, and how much revenue they bring in on a daily basis. So her numbers are more time stamped than my numbers are.
Well, I also think that you had to replace a lot of equipment this year, did you not?
Not this year, last year.
She had a couple of freezer breakdowns this year.
We have freezer breakdowns and things, but I mean.
Were the ovens last year or this?
The ovens went on capital equipment, though.
Okay.
We paid, we paid a fraction of that. We paid like $15,000 in repairs last year to equipment, so different things hit at different times. Plus there's money encumbered for payroll that, you know, maybe more was encumbered than, you know, will need to be there. So it's there until it gets unencumbered, but I, Mike encumbers it, not me, so.
Paid out. It's all salaries. Most of it's salaries, correct.
But we probably won't use all that's right there, so anyway, that, all of that takes back, and I also look at things as a profit and loss report, so I'm looking at what we're selling this year, where we're expending this year, how we're managing this year as its entity and of itself. I don't, I don't look at the revolving fund the same way you do, because that's the checkbook to me. I'm just always, I'm always trying to just make sure that we're putting money in the checkbook, and if we're going to have a negative year, if we're not going to put money into the revolving fund, that Mike knows about it well in advance. We haven't had a year like that since I've been here yet, so.
And the other thing that, I mean, Kristen really touched, very limited on it, but Learn Anywhere, she promoted what we did do for that, but every day that we don't have school, we've already pre-planned those meals, we've already pre-purchased the food. Not saying that it's all going to waste, it can be, it can be used on another day. But she starts to prep every day, because she doesn't know until 4:00 AM when we know if school's canceled. So her staff has already prepped the day before, and if they can push that off another day, they can. But when we do menus in schools, if you don't serve what you say you're going to serve, her phone's going to blow up from parents saying, "My kid chose to buy today because you were having X, but you actually had Y, and my kid doesn't like Y, why did you change the menu?" So every day of Learn Anywhere, while it's great for many things, it's probably not great for food service and, and the bottom line of food service.
And it's, that made fewer days just selling any lunches.
Right.
Well, yeah. We lost $30,000 in sales.
Seven, 30,000, seven days at, you know, 5,000 a day, that can really impact, and that could be part of the 40 right there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say.
It is part of the 40, I don't know how much of it.
Yeah, there was also a huge drop in the Walton counts, and unfortunately, because of the way that we have to buy food through the USDA, we had already pre-ordered, because you have to, in January of the year before, all the food, well, we were selling over 100 meals a day at the Walton, and all the sausages and meatballs, the things I had to get, we still had to take them in. So we didn't sell that many meals in every other building. So some of that is in inventory. We manage the inventory, but it's money in the freezer, whereas normally you just wouldn't buy that stuff. But, so there's money expended for meals that we didn't sell, but you don't see an inventory amount. So if I told you I had $40,000 worth of inventory in the freezer, that wouldn't be a good business practice, but it's going to be true at the end of this year. And through no fault of ours, there's nothing we can do about it, you have to take it once you've put that order in place. But that's all those, so there's a lot of weird variables this year that weren't there in other years.
Okay.
So.
Good questions.
Other, other questions?
Just a couple of questions. So just looking at the program enhancement under working to develop new recipes, I'm just wondering how you choose new items? Are they based on popularity, nutritional value? You know, obviously, kids are going to choose certain things, so just wondering how you decide what you're adding to the menu.
So we, we use a number of different things. One of them is absolutely student preference and the nutrition and the cost, but we usually try to use all of our friends out in the School Nutrition Association to help us decide what's going to work. So if somebody, like, somebody in Walthing has tried a great new recipe and we see it, we all share. So how did the students like it? What kind of population do you have there? You know, we'll try it up here, and we share our recipes with them. So we usually, yeah, we'll take some things off the menu if after we've tried them, they haven't worked. So like the cheeseburger quesadilla, we had a lot of pre-cooked hamburger meat that we buy, and we had a recipe on the cycle menu, and it just didn't work. The kids would not eat it, they did not like it. And so we had to take it off the menu, because it was futile to leave it on there. So we just kind of talked, what can we do? And my, it was at my house, my kids all of a sudden told me they liked quesadillas. So we tried it in a quesadilla.
And they loved it.
Yeah, Nancy and I developed the recipe utilizing nutrition and the USDA's recipe development technique, so we could see how things would come out. Kids tried it, and we were blown away. The great thing about that is you can offer lettuce and tomato and avocado and salsa, so you can kind of bury them with beans and rice, things that we usually can't get into them with something like that. So we would, we would look for a Mexican recipe or something like that, because the underlying thing is that they're going to take a lot of fresh fruit, they're going to take a lot of fresh vegetables and, and complex carbohydrates with that, where we might not be able to get it into something else. So we try to use all of it.
Kristen also took me to a food show this year, and absolutely had a great time, but they showcased all the new products, and they, they actually have chefs there cooking things all day, just saying, "Hey, if you buy our chicken, you can make this, sweet and sour chicken, or general salad chicken," or all kinds of different things. And Kristen's, I gotta say, she's put a lot of effort into challenging her staff to come up with new and exciting recipes, and I gotta say, some of them have absolutely bombed, and some of them have been great.
It's like tough stuff.
But, but it's great that they, they have the foresight to say, "Okay, this didn't work, we're not going to do this again, we dropped that, we bring something else in new." But they're always challenging, she's, Lisa and Kristen, challenging their staff to bring in new, exciting menu options for the, for the students, because there's only so many times you can have pizza, or maybe not. Pizza's a bad example, but, you know, yeah, yeah, there's so many times you've got chicken nuggets, I guess, before it starts to get old, so.
Well, when you're also looking at the price is $2.75, and half that cost is labor, what do you give your kids that includes an eight ounce milk, half a cup of fruit, half a cup of vegetable, a whole grain, and a low fat protein for under $2? It's actually under $1.50 for us, because it's only $2.75 for an elementary lunch. So it's, when you, when you kind of bring that stuff into perspective, and you think about, when I go buy the pear or the orange I want at the grocery store, it costs me more than 50 cents for the one I want, and then you're going to add an eight ounce milk, it's not like we're pouring from a gallon, we got to pay for that individual.
27 cents.
Yep. Pay for that individual purchase. So by the time you've taken a piece of fruit and a milk, you're nearing, close to a buck, and we only have $1.75, and I still have to get vegetable, protein, and grain on there. And it has to be a whole grain, so.
Right.
It's, it's an economic challenge. So that does, price comes in a lot, because you, you have to make sure that every meal that you sell, you're going to be able to break even if every child takes all five components, which we want them to do.
I think it's important for the, for the, for the parents and the community and families to understand the process behind it, because I don't think that a lot of parents do, they might just feel like it's just random, you know, and, you know, we, we know that the process is there, but anytime you can speak to that, I think it just makes the parents and the families feel more confident in the choices that are offered, that they're not just, you know, just put here without thought. So thank you for explaining that, I think it's really helpful. The other question was just, this just comes from one of my kids who won't buy pizza on Fridays, because he doesn't want to stand in line, because the line's so long, and then he loses recess time. So my question is, on high participation days, where you're like, maybe having double the amount that normally buy, how do you deal with that so that the kids aren't rushing to eat their meal in like three minutes? He comes from the Greenwood School, so it's a smaller staff and a smaller window and all of the rest of it, so.
I'll be honest with you, it's a huge challenge, because unfortunately, we can't get more staff in, because we wouldn't need them on the other days, so we wouldn't be able to hire more staff, and we don't have that kind of deep of a base of substitutes to pull from.
Right.
I honestly, I don't currently have a solution for that. It actually ends up being one of those days that we make sure we don't do any like promotions or anything like that, anything to distract, you know? We just say move really fast.
Right, right.
Pizza tends to be an easy serve versus like nachos or soup or something, like it's.
Lots of many components.
Yeah, it's a quick thing. We always do salad with it, because it's easy, it's quick, the kids know to expect.
I think the Greenwood's been a challenge, Sharon, it has to do with, some of it has to do with all of certain grades going to lunch at the same time, it's not staggered in, but it has to do with the PLCs and the teams that need to meet.
Scheduling.
Yeah, so it's, it also has to do with the teacher and the classrooms, and not so much about lunch. We don't, we schedule lunch around other things, instead of other things don't get scheduled around lunch.
Right, right.
Which makes sense, I mean, obviously, it's where in education.
They don't always show up on time sometimes, you know.
Well, I was going to say, we spent a significant amount of time at the beginning of the year, kind of with signage and firming things up, and actually doing some training at the building to try to, I, I went and did the productivity study over there, because we were trying to find out why the lines were slow, Mrs. Flora had asked us, so we were working on that, and we went over there, we made some recommendations, which did speed up the line. But it, it is what it is. It's a very small line, you can only line so much stuff, they don't have any storage behind them, so they have to, once it's, you know, they have to kind of prep as they go, so. And it, it's a weird, a weird line too, because they have to loop around in front of the doorway. So, I know that's not the answer you wanted.
No, no, it's a challenge, and I'm, I'm glad that you're, you're aware of it, and you're, you know, I'm sure you're working to improve it as much as you can.
And I have to say, the staff, they're amazing. Mary Peavy and Sonya, they, they do a really great job, and they have made strides this year trying to make things quicker, so. But you know what? We, I wrote down what you said, probably, maybe even Parent University, maybe we could even take an opportunity to not just be in the caf, maybe we could be part of Parent University and answer some questions, or do some explaining about how things work, or get some parent feedback.
I think that would be great. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a constant discussion that I hear, just about, you know, the choices and how they're made, and whether their children like them or not, so I think, I think it would be great for you to put that information out there to them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's available, but, you know, anything in person is.
No, but it's weird too, because if you haven't been in the cafeteria in a long time and seen what we're doing, there's certain assumptions people make about what they think they know, or what they think they see. There was, it wasn't here, but there was something on one of the Facebook pages, the parent pages, about a complaint from a different town about pizza and salad, and my kids buying a second slice, and why are they hungry? And I, I wanted to get on there and just write, "Because they're not taking fruits, fruits and vegetables come free, they can have as many as they want, but they're not drinking their milk, and they're not having fruits and vegetables, they're only eating their milk and they're not having fruits and vegetables, they're only eating the pizza. So if they take everything that's offered to them and actually consume it, they probably don't even have enough time to eat it all because there's a lot of food there. So I, I think that, that's probably one of the biggest misconceptions is the amount of money we spend on fresh fruits and vegetables, not canned, not frozen, fresh, the time we spend washing it and cutting it and putting it on the line. I think most people would be surprised if they walked into Nancy's fridge on any day and just saw, it's just, it's walls of just fruits and vegetables, fresh broccoli, I mean, we make our own hummus, I mean, so, like I said, I'm probably not the best at saying what we do, we just do it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
That Galvin cafeteria, I wish I had that when I was a kid. I was looking at Brother's deli, I looked really good.
You know what, it's all thin and trim, cold cuts, gluten-free, so, you know, you should go get a sandwich.
Very good ideas and a great presentation too.
Oh, thank you.
Kristin's a walking advertisement. Exactly.
Yeah, well, people know that name and they like it, they don't, they think it's like some weird, you know, government deli meat and it's not, we pay premium price and, and actually, we had one of the vendors come in this year and do a slicer training. So it's like, you know, we use the, the people to help us all the time, so.
Thank you very much, you're obviously very good at what you do and having three kids in the school system, I really appreciate all your hard work. And, and they're going to start buying lunches.
Oh, good. All the credit really does go to our staff, I mean, they're there every day smiling at those kids, you know.
And they know them by name.
They do, they know them by name, they know all their names, they, they get them through the line and they make sure that whether they have money or they don't have money or whatever, that they have a good day, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just add?
Yeah, sure, Mike.
I have to say, this team over here is dynamic, it's a one and a half team. Kristin spends half her time in, in Redding, we get only half the time. Lisa is really the backbone down there, she just keeps things going, but these two are just resilient. The Walton comes up, we'll make it happen. The Doyle happened a couple of years ago, we'll make it happen, whatever happens, they just, they roll with it, they're not always happy about it, but they roll with it, they're just.
We'll take a year off next year, just keep them all the same.
Yeah, no construction next year, you got to open the Walton. They're, they're passionate and like I said, their entire team caring. I work down there on Fridays, once a month or so, used to be more often, but once a month, I serve on the line just so I can hear the kids. But I, I heard the kids say, we don't like the chicken nuggets you're serving this year, we don't like the chicken nuggets you're serving this year. And I went to Kristin, I said, Kristin, they don't like the chicken nuggets? She's like, alright, she took me to the food, food show, we found the right nugget, the kids.
Seriously, I made him pick out the chicken nuggets.
Last year, we were serving over a hundred, a hundred on a Friday, just in that line of, of a hundred students at the high school. And this year, we're down at 50. And, and I served this last Friday and I think we had 80-something and that seniors were gone. So we're back up over a hundred to do that ratio. And I was just, I was, but they listen, they care, they want, they want to do the right to right for the, for the kids and the program and everything, so I just, a lot of kudos to these two and their entire staff, just always smiling, always happy, always willing to go the extra mile, so. Great.
I would also like to just chime in and say, these two women are my heroes, they are amazing and there is nothing that can make a superintendent look better than capable, you know, leaders in food services. Because certainly I know superintendents who struggle in that area and it's, you know, when you have people as gifted and as passionate as these guys are. And I think it says a lot about Mike Piffling that he serves on the line every week, I mean that sincerely, it says a lot about him.
I need a break from budgets, that's my point.
And the kids enjoy it. I was gonna say, we have the fun department, we're the only place the kids get to come and let loose every day, they like, this is, it's supposed to be an enjoying atmosphere, so this, I mean, our girls really try to make it that way, so. And we let Mike come down because he doesn't put a damper on that, he makes it fun.
I do get to make my own plate, I make a little bit more mashed potato than I'm supposed to, so.
He wasn't happy last Friday.
There's a method to my madness.
Well, thank you, we appreciate all that, that's kind.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for your preparedness, of course, and just, obviously, just chiming in to what everyone has already said, but if I could just, just say, you know, hearken back to prior to your arrival, is exactly what Dr. Smith was referring to, I think, that the type of, the type of environment in which we were in was, and we were bouncing between, you know, the staff and vendors and, and, you know, outsourcing and we had all of these conversations and really, really landed in a place where we wanted to believe in, in our, in our own staff and our own people and, and both of you and the team that you've assembled. I've just really proven that, day in and day out. I don't want to be tremendously redundant, but it shows. But it shows, as a, as a parent that has two kids in the system as well and through each of those, both prior to the five years and as well since, is markedly noticeably different. And please pass along our great thanks to, to the work that you do. And I do want to also say, it goes certainly without saying on how, how articulate you would be Kristin and Lisa as well in your, in your work. You say you're really not, but you really are, you're a tremendous advocate, very passionate, very outgoing, very, very, just, just you, you know, we know that you love what you do. And, and I, and I'm sure that, that you, that you model that to the staff and.
And they make our jobs easier.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it is noticeable, it is different, it is, it is exciting and is deeply appreciated. The fact that you are, that you are as articulate as you are, I suppose in some ways is not surprising, but then that's certainly a compliment. But I do also want to say how articulate Mr. Piffling is. And, and you, you were randling on just moments ago about the ins and outs and the details in this incredibly.
So complicated down there.
It is, no, and I get, I get it, Mike.
Not complicated, but complex.
And I mean that as a compliment, that, that, that this, that this part of the accountability of financial health piece is also a budget management piece. And whether you and, and Kristin from time to time have spreadsheets that don't jive, you come together at the end of each month, the end of each year and, and we've had five years of great, great growth and success and that's indicative of, of the team that's assembled, so. Anyways, thank you all very much, and certainly thank, thank the team for us. Okay, continuing on, Dr. Smith.
All right, so next, everyone has a copy of a proposed student registration zoning map for grades K to four. I'm going to, in a few moments, ask Mike if he'd go to the, to the one of the easel and kind of explain some detail about it, but I'd like to go through what is in your packet, the information that I provided to you, just to kind of set the stage. So as you know, I, I came to the committee some months back talking about kindergarten registration and for the third consecutive year, there was an influx of registration at a different school, actually, each year. My first year as superintendent, we had an over enrollment at the Woodville School. My second year as superintendent, we had over enrollment at the Dahlberg School. And this year, we had over enrollment at the Walton School. And what I mean by over enrollment in regard to kindergarten registration is really based on the school's design. So the Dahlberg and Woodville Schools are designed as large elementary schools for four classrooms at each grade level. The two elementary schools, the smaller ones, Greenwood and Walton, are designed for two classrooms at each grade level. So if all of those classes are full, we have 12 classrooms across the district. And so as our NESDEC number projections, you know, have, that have been provided to us, enrollment projections, we remain stable with 12 classrooms across the district. I put in the background information just to remind everyone about what school committee class size policy is. So if you just remember, at kindergarten, policy allows for maximum of 22 students per class and then in grades one through four, school committee class size policy allows for 25 students per class. In each of those cases, the superintendent can add up to two children in a classroom without having to return to the school committee for approval. So, you know, I gave you a little bit of information on what we refer to as the bubble effect or the idea of having a bubble classroom in a school. So every one of our four schools has an extra room should we need it on any given year. But there, you know, one of the things we really know educationally is there, there are some really detrimental effects of creating over enrollment in one school and then, you know, consequently, under enrollment in another school based on the designs of the schools. And we've experienced the effect of having a bubble class in recent years. It creates some kind of overcrowded conditions in one school and then in another school, for example, at the Woodville, this past year, we are finally graduating what I like to call the under bubble, it's a, it's a class, a grade level of only three classes, so it's kind of an under, under enrolled group. And some of those implications have to do with the four that I listed in your packet. One, the size and dimensions of whatever that extra class might be and its location in relation to the, to the grade level. And, and I think a really important point here is that if you make the move to create a bubble class, the, the impact lasts for, you know, the educational impact lasts for five years. So it's not a one-year thing, once, once it's in, it's in for good, and so you're talking about a five-year effect. So that extra class may not have the same kind of size, dimension and location that's ideal in the school. Secondly, it really impacts the scheduling of our specialists, that's art, technology, library, media, music, physical education and health. And, and it can create, you know, some inequities and challenges in regard to scheduling, just in general, but specifically around specialists that we share across the district. The scheduling of student intervention services and student support services, it also really impacts that in a less than ideal way. And then a fourth piece is teacher assignments in regard to teachers' training skill and expertise. So when a bubble class moves, you have to move teachers with the bubble class, which means almost every year, you're putting a teacher in a grade level that they perhaps haven't taught yet, they might not be, you know, they'll be their first year with the curriculum and those adjustments are being made continuously through that. So as we evaluate that situation, you know, the, the recommendation I had made to the school committee several months ago was, you know, just to say that, you know, in, in my opinion, as the educational leader in, in Wakefield, is that to establish the optimum learning environment for all students, I would recommend only creating a bubble class if the total district population exceeds the 12 classrooms. You know, we've got plenty of room to house our kindergarten students and, and our students across all grade levels as they move through. We may come to a year down the road where we will require a 13th classroom and if we do, then we will create a bubble wherever that belongs. But if we don't have to do it, it would be preferable not to create that kind of detrimental effect. And, and it's, it's certainly my belief and Doug Lyons' belief as well, along with school principals, that we believe this creates a long-term, educationally sound recommendation. So basically, the way we have handled it the last three years, we've, we've done the same thing each of the last three years at FY17, 18 and 19. And the steps basically were to identify what I've been sort of referring to as swing zones, which is just in the outskirts of each, of the over enrolled school zone area. And those swing zones are designated as two possible school zones. So in FY19, for example, the swing zones on the outer boundaries, boundaries of Walton Zone were designated Walton Dahlberg or Walton Woodville, okay? And what we did was we identified the incoming kindergarten families who have already had students in the primary zone, which is their first school listed in the swing zone, just really understanding that if you have older siblings or you've had older children in that school, you're part of that school family, you're part of that community, you already belong to that family. So we prioritize those children registering at their primary schools. In the last three years, we were able to accommodate all of these families and I would project that typically we would be able to do that. Then we identified families in those outskirts, swing zones, that were close to the borderline of two school, district areas, who are registering their first child in the Wakefield Public Schools. So these students, at this point, don't have a connection with any particular schools or the families don't have a connection with a particular school at this point. And those are the students who may be, if necessary, registered at the secondary school zone, which is the second school zone listed in the swing zone. So once we've done that and we notify families who are enrolled in the secondary school zone, we notify them of the transfer request process and basically, really, any family can fill out a transfer request, you know, anyone in the, in the town. But those who submit them are placed on a waiting list for their desired school and often seats open up over the summer to accommodate those students. If you remember last year, you know, we had some issues at Dahlberg, some of those families that were registering their first child were registered in another school. Those who submitted transfer requests and were on a waiting list, ultimately, they ended up getting in because one of the things, the reality is, is when we register students, it's January, it's a long time to go before the school year opens. Families move, you know, so there's some fluctuation at different schools, so we're often able to accommodate. And then there were a few of the families we called and they were having a wonderful experience at their school and, you know, are, were excited because they'd already done their, you know, pre-school meeting and, and had a wonderful experience, you know, we were happy where we are and, and that was fine too. So we also notify those families that if you're on a waiting list and for some reason you don't get into the desired school, your kindergarten year, there's another opportunity in first grade when that school committee size, class size policy is increased, it really opens up a bunch of seats. And so it creates an opportunity for some of the students to go in grade one if they still really want to. I, I think one of the most important pieces though is that we do share with our families that all four elementary schools in Wakefield are excellent, high-performing schools. We, we now, you know, this wasn't the case 10 years ago, but we can absolutely unequivocally say now, we guarantee a common curriculum and a common experience at all schools, you know, and most often when looking at, you know, the possibility of going one to school or to another, I'm proud to say they're both level one schools, you know, so, you know, we're in great shape. So I wanted to, Mike, to kind of show you what the swing zones look like in each area to kind of describe that to you.
I'll start with the Walton area because Kimari touched base on that, Dr. Smith. That's the orangish shade, I'm colorblind, so just help me with the colors, but the orangish shade, it's the dark, the light and the, in the medium color. The lightest shade is the, that whole zone right there is Walton, that is Walton's school zone. The lightest zone would always remain Walton if you were in that zone, that close to that school district.
And the little yellow pin is where the school is.
So the yellow pin is where the school is. But if you're in the lightest shade here, you would typically always stay within that, in the Walton District. It's the outskirts, it's down here, that this, this darker shade right here would transfer over to the Woodville and this middle shade here would transfer over to the Dahlberg. So we kind of identified areas, this is already the Woodville District down here, this, this light purple, so we're really already budding up to that. And then over here, this is our Dahlberg District, so we're, we're already budding up to that also. So it's from a busing standpoint and transportation standpoint, we can offer the services without putting kids on the bus for an extra, an extended period of time. Down here in the green section, the entire green section is the Greenwood, the light Greenwood remain as Greenwood if there was an, if there was an influx in enrollment. The darker greens are the areas that we might be able to pick children from to attend the Woodville School instead. This gray area, the entire gray, the light and the dark is the Dahlberg District. And over here, this, this dark section over here is where we had to identify some families last year to go to the Woodville because we're overpopulated in kindergarten for Dahlberg. But as Dr. Smith had mentioned, by the time summer had flushed through, most of those families were actually able to go to the Dahlberg or choose, chose to stay at the Woodville, that they were pleased with what they had experienced there. So that gray area, and you'll see, you'll notice that a lot of this gray area, this dark gray area is actually closer to the Woodville from a distance standpoint than they are to the Dahlberg. So these, these zones have been in place, I think, probably for about 10 years. I think school committee went through this exercise and redistricted everything about 10 years ago, from what I understand, it was before my time. The purple, obviously, is, is the Woodville School and in that little section right there is a, a, a swing zone between either the Woodville and the, the Dahlberg. And then this one here, we actually, we actually did this two years ago when we had a problem, not a problem, but a, an enrollment bubble at the Woodville, we reached out to these families and asked them if they'd be willing to go to the Dahlberg and they, you know, they were amenable to that. So I, I think that this really just gives us an opportunity to, to not have to come before a school committee every year with a bubble or with a situation where parents would say, but I bought a house in this community, that's where I thought I was going to school. Now it's a little bit more clearly defined. And I have to give Katie LaFerty over at the Town DPW Engineering Department a huge kudo, she actually worked with us on this map, she has got every plot of land in Wakefield plotted out for what day your recycling comes, what day your trash comes, what day, what, what precinct you vote in and every, everything and the school is actually part of that also and all of our links at our websites and I'd link to the, the town's DPW from an, from an address standpoint. So she really helped us out big time on this and really give her a lot of kudos.
I would just really, just emphasize a point that Michael made, which is, so if you are a Woodville, you know, if you live somewhere in that Woodville area, you know, we are now online, a family, you know, maybe that has their first kindergarten child coming into the Wakefield Public Schools can pop their address into the zoning map search and if they're in that lighter purple area, it'll just come up, your address is associated with Woodville. If they live in the areas where the dark purple is, it would say your area is Woodville/Dahlberg. So it really sets like expectations for people like, okay, I'm buying a home or I live in a place that I, I might be assigned to either one of those two schools. And I think it will help, you know, over the years, be able to just manage any uneven enrollment across the district, you know, in a way that really makes a lot of sense.
Okay, very good, thank you. Questions, comments for Dr. Smith or Mr. Piffling?
Ms. Cowan in.
I'm, I'm fine with this map, I think it's, it's great, it's setting people's expectations. I, I think that a place where maybe we could do a better job would be to try to work more closely with the town clerk's office as far as the census data and know. closely with the Town Clerk's Office as far as the census data and know how many two-year-olds there are so we could plan better for where these influxes are going to come on our, rather than wait for the registration, we would know the numbers to expect off the census data, which I imagine should be readily available to us.
So if I may follow, to Chris's point, you had made reference to a NESDEC study that was done. Could you speak to that? Because that would have been fairly comprehensive, that would have taken that data into account.
So we had a, so NESDEC is an organization that does produce enrollment studies for districts, and typically, you will have one done if you are doing a feasibility study to build a new school so that you're doing a good job with that and projecting well. So they did, when Galvin was built, they had done a 15-year study, and then they did it again when the Walton was in the feasibility phase. And so we're able to project ahead, just projected enrollments for the town of Wakefield, and they stay pretty stable, you know, throughout. There was no really concern that there's going to be a big influx in any one year.
I think they were off with the Galvin, though. I think that they predicted that our enrollment would not go up, and it did.
Well, our enrollment went up, but it wasn't because of people moving in. It really had a little bit more to people staying and not going to private school, which sometimes is one of the outcomes of...
But I just remember with the Galvin, that was one of our, you know, the building committees, we kept saying, "We think we're going to have more people."
Yeah, yeah.
And Desi and those guys kept saying, "No." And of course, we were right. But I think with our own, I think NESDEC has given us totals and not school by school, right?
No, right.
Yeah, just totals.
They give us a 30,000-foot view of...
How many kids in Wakefield are going to be in fourth grade, but not in fourth grade at the Walton or the Dahlberg or the Woodville?
That information, if we worked at it, we might be able to get better information from our own local census test.
Yeah, I think so. There's also other things. I mean, some schools host programs that are not in all schools, like our ASD classrooms or our medically fragile classrooms and our stack programs. They are not hosted in every school, so we are pulling from other areas of town. So the numbers are not going to be 100% accurate, but we might be able to get a little closer. I agree. And I think what that's going to tell us is that we're going to have a problem in three years.
Plan for it.
But again, you still get to the point where you want a bubble in a classroom because the data is there, it's just how are you going to deal with the data?
But I'm just saying, we could put the word out earlier, and people wouldn't therefore be surprised at registration.
It's certainly my hope that this type of a solution, I mean, it makes, it's so logical, it makes so much sense, that really, even if we had the data, and I agree with you, I think we could get early census data, which would be really just informative. But nonetheless, we have a solid plan for how to, you know, register students evenly across the district that makes sense. And again, just having that little bit of flexibility on the outskirts. And if you notice, some of the outskirts, like some of those, like the purple, dark purple looks kind of big, but you can see that that's not a very populated, there's very few houses in that spot. And you look at other places that are very densely populated. So really, those outskirts of each area are really just kind of helpful, and just being able to designate them ahead of time. I think I put in my notes, I talked to Doug Lyons, I said, you know, "This would be really good information, you know, if this proposal moves along," to go to the realtors in town and share, because I do think sometimes the realtors will say, "Oh, you know, you're buying a house in such and such a place." Well, the good news is, in Wakefield, that's good news no matter where you go. And I think we're really proud of that. That's not the case in every community. You know, you're buying, you know, homes in a desirable town, in a desirable community that we have four extremely strong elementary schools. So that's just, you know, so I think that, but I think if we're clear about, you know, what that these, this map looks like, and when, like I say, when people look on the website, or they put their address in, or a realtor says you're buying a house, you know, what is that associated with? What's your neighborhood school? They'll be able to say more clearly and set those expectations so someone's not disappointed three years later, "Oh, jeez, I had kind of thought all along I was going to go to this school." And not that the other school's not a good school, but it was just a surprise. And, you know, I think it's setting more accurate expectations while at the same time providing just that little bit of flexibility to kind of get us through. And like I say, if I thought, certainly if the data showed to us that we were having a problem in one area, we'd be talking about redistricting. But it's not. For three consecutive years, we've had, the problems have been in a different area. So it's just kind of moving around. So that's really just, at the end of the day, we're really prepared to best service students in 12 classrooms. And that's how the schools were designed, the four, the two, and the two. So that makes the most sense to do that.
Chris, add.
So can we, I know we don't want to promise, but to allay fears that, you know, families won't be split, right? So that's one concern I could imagine somebody having.
And just before we go to the next thing, we haven't done that yet. And it's our plan, like I say, to follow that protocol so that we do not split families. And in fact, the year, two years ago, when we had the students go from that dark purple area to, they were originally assigned Woodville, we signed them to Dahlberg, I actually wrote them letters really promising that all their children would go to Dahlberg, that they are now a Dahlberg family. So I think, because I think that was the reassurance, to your point, and that people wanted to have, was to know that if my oldest child goes there, that my other children are going to be, to go there as well.
Right.
And I think that that is extremely important to keep families together.
Right, right. And that we're really looking at sort of new registrations. So a family has a child in their school, it's their only kid, and they, you know, they're in Greenwood, and then there's a bunch of other third graders that come in from wherever that belong in Greenwood. The current Greenwood families would stay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So I think that you're right, is to try to allay those fears because that's very important. That's how we've handled each of the last three years. So it's really, these are children that are brand-new and families that are brand-new to all of our schools or any of our schools.
Yeah. Thank you.
Colleen?
Thank you. I just have a question, just a clarification. So looking at the Walton numbers, you've got 46 registered. That would put 23 per class, and we have 22 minimum for kindergarten. These are kindergarten numbers. Yeah, okay. So does that mean you're only really over two students in each of the classes? So if your numbers change over the summer, and, you know, maybe those two families are told that they're going to the Dahlberg or the Woodville, then it's two, is that right? That there's only two students? Am I reading that right?
No, we actually already, this area down here and this area up here were already...
They already were dispersed. Okay, all right.
For next year, right. Those families have been notified.
Okay. Because that's what I thought I had heard, but I just wanted to make sure because it didn't jive with this. So this is going forward, already having them...
Correct. This is done. This is done. Yes, this is, there's no, everyone is already placed, everyone's already registered. So right now, we would just be taking any transfer requests of someone, anyone, whether they were affected in those swing zones or for any other reason. A parent or family says, you know, "I'd like to have my child at a different school," they can submit a transfer request, which has their reasoning or rationale on it, and we take a look at it, and we try to accommodate wherever it makes sense to accommodate those requests. And certainly those who, you know, you know, were sent to that, to the other school, maybe from where they originally had thought they would be going, which I think if we have these zones moving forward, we won't have to worry about that. But I do want to get back, Colleen, to your question about the numbers and the classes. So while class size policy for kindergarten is 22, we do have, and it so often happens, especially at Greenwood and Walton because they're small schools, we often will start with 23. And I will, you know, allow for that extra student. I mean, I could add a 24th without coming back to the school committee, but every kindergarten teacher in the world will tell you that that just tips, that's the tipping point right there, is going from 23 to 24. They feel like they can manage the 23. And so at this time, we really are maxed out at actually both the Walton and the Woodville. We're at 23s across the board at those two schools. At the Greenwood, our class, our two classes, one has 21 and one has 20, which are great numbers. And at Dahlberg, the four classes, 21, 20, 20, and 20. So there's still more room should some family move into Wakefield at this point, and that would be the case any year. If someone moves in really late in the game, you know, you have to go where the seats are available. But again, even when that happens, the following year, because the class size policy goes up a little bit, does create a little bit of space, you know, to put in a transfer request if you'd like to go somewhere else. I have to say, I often, we often find that, again, I think our schools are so strong and the communities are so strong, that often, there's a lot of satisfaction. And some of the people that thought perhaps a year later they'd want to go somewhere else end up saying, "No, it's, we're having a great experience, and we want to stay here." So, but we're open to either situation.
And I think I may have misspoke earlier because you brought up the 23 point. I said if you're in this light yellow area, you'll always be a Walton family. That's not the case because we are at 23. If somebody actually moves into town now, they could be in that light yellow area, but we don't have a slot, we're not saving any seats. We're first come, first served in that area. So somebody who moves into that light yellow area now could be dispersed to another school. Right, right. But we work with them to identify the best school for the children.
We have an asterisk for that. An asterisk for that.
Yeah, exactly. Asterisk. If you move in, all bets are off.
Okay.
And sometimes that has happened in the last, you know, three, five years where someone moves in and they have to take a seat where a seat's available. But often, if they are interested in moving the next year, like I said, that there is the opportunity to do so.
Students also move out, of course.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Any other comments? The only one that I would make is just thank you to the superintendent and the team for bringing this forward. I think having a plan in place will allow not only you and the district to plan, but families to plan. And that is going to be very big, so it's not so much the last minute. So thank you for all that work and putting together the elementary school map. Okay. Is there any else, Dr. Smith, on your hit parade tonight?
Nope. That's it.
Okay. Item 11, Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Facilities. Chris.
We did meet last Friday.
Friday.
And I haven't prepared my notes to give to Judy yet to disperse. That's my fault. I have my hand notes, but I haven't given them to her. We just reviewed the status of where we are for the, coming into year-end. We're going to meet again before our next meeting, I think that Monday morning, and just review the final adjustments that Mike has to make as far as any transfers he might want to do. We reviewed that fee schedule, and sort of that, we're doing well. At our next meeting, we also want to make sure we're circling back and getting the facilities portion of that discussion back on a better track.
Very good. Thank you. Labor personnel has not met since the last meeting, so there's really nothing to report there. Policy and planning. Ms. Fortier.
I have a policy, a wellness policy that we have a motion for.
We do.
I need that the school committee lay on the table, policy number 222, wellness, for a period of two weeks for consideration at the June 26 school committee meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number 12, future school committee dates. As we know, June 26, two weeks from this evening, is our next meeting, last meeting of the fiscal year. It'll be another, and it'll be another last, which we don't want to talk about too much for certain someone, but nonetheless, it'll, nonetheless, I do want to make, mention in addition to the things that we've talked about tonight as far as having on that agenda, such as subcommittee reorganization, that has been a meeting that between Greg and myself, we've invited the state legislators. So Senator Lewis, Representative Wong, and Representative Broda will be joining us to discuss the state budget process as it's winding down, and perhaps even have some more concrete information by then. So plan on our state legislative delegation will be joining us at that meeting as well. Any other questions with regard to that? Seeing none? Okay. School committee comments going around the table. Ms. Purcell.
I have no comments. At this time.
At this time. All right, fair enough. Mr. Layakos.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the class of 2018 Wakefield Memorial High School, and congratulations again to the staff of the Wakefield Public Schools for putting together really another beautiful, moving ceremony.
Very good. Ms. Fortier.
I'd also like to add my congratulations. It was a great ceremony. Congratulations to the two parents of graduates here, so I'm sure you're happy to have that behind you. Yeah, it was a wonderful ceremony. And I also would like to wish my daughter, Isabella, a happy birthday. She's 17, and I can't even believe it.
Very good. Ms. Kellin?
Again, I also want to extend my congratulations. I was riding for best buddies on that day, so I wasn't just not arriving, I was out for good cause as well. I thought you might like to hear a little bit about the Walton that's progressing very, very well. I do monitor daily construction reports, and the steel building is going up piece by piece. They're actually getting ready to carpet areas of the Phase 1 next week, I believe. So that's kind of exciting that that part is really, the first phase is nearing completion. And the steel building is progressing very much on schedule. I think even some of the furniture has already arrived, so, you know, we expect to be in good shape.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Congratulations to class of 2018, and congratulations to all the families that can benefit from the extra reduction in the activity piece. So I know that's an easy subject to talk about for many, many years, but finally made it happen, and we did it for three years in a row. So congratulations.
Ms. Gueda.
I'd also like, excuse me, like to echo everyone's comments on the graduation ceremony. Being a parent, and my first time, it was our first time, Amy and I, clearly, it was my first time giving a diploma. That was funny. But I was just so moved by the ceremony as well and so impressed with our class officers and councils and our valedictorian and salutatorian. Their speeches really motivated and inspired me as an adult, and I know they were motivating and inspiring to our students and our graduates as well. And it just speaks to the caliber of students that we have in our system, our educators as well, and the music and everything. It was almost like a show at some points, you know, and it really just never, it never got boring or tedious as ceremonies can be, and I think everyone was happy to be there, and it was really such a celebratory event. So it's wonderful. So thank you, everyone who's involved.
Very nice. Dr. Smith? Okay. I would just certainly echo what everyone's already said. Congratulations to the class of 18, and to all of the families that have been celebrating that. And so again, recognition to the retiring members of our staff and thanking them for years and years of service to our town and our families. Next, motion to adjourn is in order.
I move the school committee adjourns meeting of Tuesday, June 12, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Good evening, everyone. Good night.
Just one second.